And trustee Townsend.
Here.
All right, thank you. I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda and including the amendment to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move to item four then, approval of the minutes of the October fifteenth, 2013 Board of Trustees meeting.
Move.
Approval.
Second.
Okay, we have motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and likewise, I need a motion for approval of the minutes of the November fifth Board of Trustees special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Brings us down to item number five on the agenda, which is audience to patrons or petitioners. Is there anyone present here today that would like to address the board?
Holiday season.
Seeing none, we'll move to item number six, communications, and I'll look to Dr. Givens and Carolyn maybe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Carolyn Allstar. Come forward, please. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
For the fourth consecutive year, Kansas City Kansas Community College has been named to the coveted Military Friendly Schools list. The 2014 Military Friendly Schools list honors the top twenty percent of colleges, universities, and trade schools in the country that are doing the most to embrace America's military service members, veterans, and spouses as students and ensure their success on campus. Inclusion on the 2014 list of Military Friendly Schools shows Kansas City Kansas Community College's commitment to providing a supportive environment for our military students. The need for education is growing, and the mission is to provide the military community with transparent world-class resources to assist in their search for schools, according to Sean Collins, who is with Victory Media, who is the group that provides this award. One thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight colleges and universities and trade schools are on this year's list and exhibit leading practices in the recruitment and retention of students with military experience. These schools have world-class programs and policies for student support on campus, academic accreditation, credit policies, flexibility, and other services to those who served. A data-driven survey of more than ten thousand schools nationwide, which are approved for VA tuition funding, is distributed, and that's how the schools are selected to this list. The categories include quite a long list, military support on campus holds the most weight, academic credibility, percent of military students, academic credit for military service, flexibility for military students, veteran graduation rates, student tuition assistance. There's also a student survey that is distributed to veterans that are attending college, employment rates, military spouse policies, and government approvals. Now, if you'll recall, I was here last year to present a plaque to Dr. Givens, and as we all know, budgets are getting tighter, and this group no longer provides a plaque. We can buy one if we'd like to, they're about seventy dollars. But we know our budget's tight also, so I did bring for each of you kind of a token of this award. On one side is our intertwined KC for Kansas City Kansas Community College, and on the backside is the Military Friendly School logo for 2014, so I have one of these for each of you. Thank you for your support. Without the support of the Board of Trustees and the administration, a lot of the things that we do for our military-affiliated students would not be possible. Based on the information in our student records platform, we have four hundred and twenty-eight military-affiliated students. This includes veterans, active duty, and family members that are attending, so thank you.
All right, Carolyn, well, thank you, and on behalf of the board, we would like to thank administration and faculty for all that you do in support of our veterans and our military-affiliated families. I think it's a real honor to be one of the top colleges to receive this recognition again, and we covet it, so thank you very much. Any other comments, trustees?
Thank you.
We asked before communication.
Are there other communications?
Yes, there are other communications, I'm sorry. KCKCC hosted KC's Global Entrepreneurialship Week, and it was hosted at the Thomas R. Burke Technical Education Center. KCKCC was joined by Sprint, Google Fiber, and Think Big co-working as platinum sponsors of Kansas City Startup Weekend that was held November fifteenth through the seventeenth. The goal of the entrepreneur-based event was to help entrepreneurs meet and network with people who can help turn that small idea into a launched business by the end of that weekend. They were successful, I have the numbers available if anybody would like to see them. The winners, first, second, and third place. Pigeon, a social game that helps lost pigeons find their way home, won first prize. Second place was Echo Smart. It's a horse health records for horse owners, veterinarians, and competitors. And the third place was Peering Photo Dating Mobile App Built on Instagram. And the favorite was Harp Health, which connects first responders to doctors with real-time video conferencing using global glass for faster acute care that saves lives. So a thank you goes out to our police and to everyone who had a hand in assisting with making that successful. The organizers said that it was the best internet connectivity and bandwidth they have experienced, so we had great success with their program. Thank you for all the work you do, Dean Hunt and your staff. This is from the Kansas City Area Development Council. Kansas City Area Development Council Board of Directors elected Doris Givens to the Board of Directors for a two-year term. You will be joining other well-known business and civic leaders committed to an aggressive program designed to grow the economy of our by-state Kansas City area. We're delighted by your willingness to serve. That's from Bob Marcus, the president's CEO.
Congratulations, I think.
We also hosted the Second Annual Workplace Readiness Week here at KCKCC, and it was, like everything else that they do, it was very successful. So thank you again, Dean Hunt, and your staff. It's getting close to Christmas time, where we host Christmas in the City for low-income families living in public housing in Section Eight that have children ages thirteen and under. So we do that every year. Historically, we host, we serve about a thousand families, and if you are in a giving mode during this season, a sixty-dollar donation will sponsor a family of four. And if you're interested, I have the information of who to write the check to, and we'll make sure that the check is delivered so that these families, a thousand families in KCK, will have a good Christmas. We've been having Donuts with Don and Doris. Now, there are some folks that say we need to change it from Donuts because Donuts aren't healthy. So when we find something else that rhymes, we might, but right now, it's Donuts with Don and Doris. So I was here for the first one, and faculty Melanie Jackson Scott, who's been here thirty-two years, was one faculty member, she's full-time. We had part-time faculty Patsy Kyle, and we had Doug Sickel, who is also part-time faculty or adjunct. And then we had an admin assistant, Missala Allen, who's the admin assistant in Baz Avellanian's area. So those are the folks we had on October twenty-second. There was a second one on November twelfth, and probably President Ash. Chairman Ash will talk about that one. Today, we hosted our first, and you can't call the first one annual, but we will do this annually if there are members of our faculty, staff, board, who die during the year. We'll do it annually, and we'll do it about this time every year. Today, we invited the families of Felicia Hurst and Curtis Smith to come because those are the two that we lost during the course of last year. And so they came today, and we hosted the families, and we had a very nice ceremony. And the tree is planted, there is a sign on the tree marking it as in memoriam to those two employees that we lost during the course of last year. And I thank you all who attended, it was well-attended too, and that's important for the families. And I think that's all.
Okay, just to expound a little bit more on Donuts with Doris and Don. We just, it's an informal time that we spend with employees to give them an opportunity to share with us what they would like the president of the college and chairman of the Board of Trustees or the Board of Trustees to know. And Dr. Vitale sat in in your absence last week. We had a great visit with four additional employees scattered from around the Colonnage. We've had folks from IT, from Tech Center, from English Department, Wellness Center. Gosh, help me out. Billington Grounds didn't make it, he didn't make it the other day. But anyway, and I don't know how they win this lottery, I think that's, you know, Dr. Givens and Peggy have got that figured out, but, you know, they're designed to be about an hour and for us just to visit informally and let them share with us. I know in the first meeting, Doris took at least one full page of notes, if not two or three, that she, ideas and thoughts that were really pretty good and very insightful. And so the employees have been open, they've been engaging, very much so, and once again, it just goes to solidify the strength of this college, which I think is the people that we have here. Very diverse, very capable, very competent, and very engaged by and large. And looking to engage, you know, more with various suggestions. And so it's been a good productive time, I think, and we are planning to do one session a month, and we'll work around to everybody that has an interest in, you know, coming and visiting with us, so. Stay tuned, your number may come up in the lottery here.
This is part of our strategic plan. One area has this as one of their outcomes, to improve communication at the college, and so we're working that strategic plan.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments on the president's report? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to accept the president's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, agenda item eight, Vice President for Academic Affairs report. We'll hear from Dr. Vitale. Oh, I'm sorry, president's report.
Oh, there was one of the thing.
That was communications, yeah, that was communications.
We are at a point at the college where we've heard mentioned several times a foundation for the college, and we've never come to any consensus. I've never been directed to develop a foundation, so I'm wanting direction from the board about where we go with a foundation, developing a foundation at the college. I have talked to Attorney Nguyen, and he has given me some information about it, and he can give some more information about what it takes to develop a foundation and what that will look like if the board has questions of him.
Okay.
I would just ask Mr. Nguyen, what would be the process, what would be involved in setting that up?
I think we would begin by developing a corporation. You would tell me who the members of the corporation would be. We have a general sense of what the purpose might be, would be to raise funds or to support the educational mission of the college, and maybe some other things as well. From there, once we get that established, you would seek a 501(c)(3) status, which is, you would need a letter from IRS indicating that you meet all the requirements for that, and that's just another process that you'd go through. My sense is that to develop the corporate body, you need to begin the process to get tax-exempt status would be maybe sixty to ninety days, once you decided what you wanted to do. And then from there, it would depend on where you fall in the IRS sort of chain of what is next. But we've done a dozen or so of these over the years, and this is the type of purpose, and this is the type of entity that typically doesn't experience that much difficulty or pushback. But what you would need to be, to begin the process, is an action by the Board of Trustees indicating that you'd like to move forward. My thought would be to authorize Dr. Givens to do what is necessary. Number one, to establish the corporate entity necessary, and then, once that's been established, to approach you again within the next month or so about the corporate tax-exempt status or the 501(c)(3) status, and then I could tell you more about what that entails then. It's not unusual, and Dr. Daniels was with me, I'm going to say some twenty-three, twenty-four years ago when we did the first educational not-for-profit foundation in this area. And so we've got some history as to some of your members with what you're doing. And so, Mr. Chairman, right now, I guess what we're looking for, and Dr. Givens in particular, is an indication that this is what you'd like to happen, and then a directive for us to make it so, and then to come back to you for the approval that's needed in between now and then. And my thought is that an outside time would be perhaps at the end of this academic year, or maybe the beginning of next year, you'd like to see what is, what I've described in place. Dr. Givens, is that about right?
Yes.
All right, well, then that's what you do. There's some other issues that are legal issues that I'd be happy to discuss with you in closed session, but this is the general overview that I think it's important for you to know.
You need a motion?
Well, yes, I mean, ultimately, we need a motion. Is there any more question or?
So what we'd be voting on today would be moving the process forward, but there would still be more discussion.
Well, yes, and I think that, and Dr. Givens, you help me, what you were looking for is some push by the board or some affirmation that this is a step they'd like us to explore and to come back with a formal action for you to act upon in the future, but sooner rather than later. Now, Dr. Givens, help me out.
Absolutely, you're correct.
I'll make that motion. I think there's still some, I'm not sure the board's had a lot of discussion around this item, but we've had enough, I think, at least we've shown an interest in it, so I think it's worthwhile to go ahead and approve the moving forward with it, and then we could have more discussion and come back and make a final decision. But we have had conversation about putting a foundation in place, so I'll make that motion, like Daryl said.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion or question? Everybody clear on what we're asking to move forward? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So ordered.
I've finished.
She's finished, all right. All right, since we just voted on what her report was and she asked to do, I don't know now that we need to, another motion to approve her report, or do we?
Mr. President, you can accept or approve it, but my thought is that that was her report.
Yes. That's my thought as well, I just wanted to clarify.
You're correct.
All right, okay, thank you. Moving to agenda item number eight, now we will hear from Dr. Vitale.
Thank you. You have my report in front of you, if there are any questions, I'll certainly answer them. Did want to mention that over the weekend, I think it started Thursday night, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday afternoon, our theater department put on the play Harvey, which was very entertaining. One of our faculty members was one of the stars in it, and I think she was really playing herself. If you know her, but anyway, she had a great time doing it, I saw her Monday. There was a jazz concert last night, and the vocal concert is tomorrow night. And I leave tomorrow to go to Chicago for a Higher Learning Commission meeting on the pathways. Song Ki Min is driving to Chicago as we sit here and have our boardman meeting because he preferred to drive since it was less than ten hours and rather than fly, so I'm flying.
Good choice.
All right. Are there any?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions or comments.
Okay, break.
Vice President Vitale, on page fifteen. Dr. Min's not here, so I don't expect an answer on this today, but he's working on developmental education, define the term for college-ready and developmental design research methodologies for launching in-depth research and developmental education. Could we get a report on that down the road somewhere?
Yes, we can.
What that's going to look like and the progress? Because I think that's really important, important work that that group is doing. I don't know who all is doing it, but if next month or two or somewhere where you could get to the point you can make a report, I'd appreciate that. Then at the bottom of the page, talking about a learning management system, Blackboard is approved. I agree with that Blackboard program, is that going to be, are teachers going to be using that in classroom? How is Blackboard going to be used in the college?
Blackboard's a, it's a course management tool, and that's the platform that all of our online courses will be offered through. Right now, we're using a product called Angel, started out as an open-source software, and I think it was one of those that were open-source, and then became closed-source, and Blackboard purchased it, and they're no longer going to continue to support it. So we had to make a move to a learning, different learning management system. The faculty looked at several, narrowed it down to two, chose the Blackboard platform, which is very similar to Angel. And they'll be implementing that for the fall of 2014. All of our online courses will be in it, our hybrid courses, our blended courses, where they're on in-class part of the time and online part of the time will be in it, and other courses. And one of the things I'm working with, with the academic deans and over with the online services is the hope that down the road, all of our faculty will have the opportunity to use it as a shell for their course, so that if the faculty wants to put, you know, if they're doing videos, PowerPoints, they can put those there so the students would have access to them anytime, and, you know, they could use it for practice quizzes and so forth if they wanted, and even something just as simple as posting their grades in there, because the students log in, they have access to it, it's secure, and so that's what the Blackboard is.
Yeah, sounds great, thanks, appreciate that.
I just had a comment on page thirteen at the bottom.
Yes, ma'am.
About Jim Mayer. I went to the West Branch Library for the reception where his group played, which they're always wonderful, but I would encourage you all to go and visit the West Branch Library to see the photography exhibit. It is really wonderful, of a lot of the old and current jazz musicians, but also Jim Mayer's photograph is there as well, it's wonderful. So just wanted to encourage you to attend the activities at Bop in the Dot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yes, very am.
On the Healthy Communities, the Spirit Committee, real shortly, tell me what they're doing.
What they're doing is they're looking at ways to improve the overall health of the population in Wyandotte County. I think Kansas, Wyandotte County is the, if not the lowest, one of the lowest ranking.
And we're a hundred and five out of a hundred and five.
Right, yeah, and so.
I think we moved up one. I think we moved up one, yeah.
Oh, good.
And strategies, you know, how, what we can do, different aspects of the county can do to help improve the overall health of the people who live in Wyandotte County.
Have they got something set of how you're going to do it, not just say, you know?
I don't think there's been any really concrete plans as yet. It seems, I think it's fairly new.
It's part of the mayor's task force.
Task force and stuff, so we're moving.
He had it before.
I've been to two meetings so far, and there's some, there's some workgroups within that that do things. Like there's an education subcommittee that Dr. Daniels is chair of, and so we just submitted things that our different businesses do to help promote health and wellness of either their employees or clients, et cetera. And so from here, we looked at what's available to the college, faculty and staff, and then what do we have available to our students, and what would also be available to the general public in terms of our continuing ed offerings and so forth, in terms of nutrition programs and et cetera.
Any additional questions for Dr. Vitale? All right, I'll entertain a motion then.
So moved to approve Dr. Vitale's report.
All right, we have a motion and second from trustee Townsend. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, Vice President for Student Administrative Services, Mr. Bodie.
Thank you. You have my report, and I will answer any questions that you may have about that.
Sorry to see the mill levy situation. I know you were too.
Yes, forty-one, one thousandth of a mill increase, there was about an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar change in the appraised value.
Mr. Bodie, I have a question about Linda Wyatt's report, and it's about the interviews that occurred on campus. I was really impressed by her comment where she was talking about the students that interviewed and that the companies were impressed with the quality of the students and how they dressed and were prepared for interviews. What are we doing to prepare the students so well?
Well, we have a, I mean, there's a program across this campus that is going on at all times. We have a financial literacy program, we have a program where we bring students in and show them. Marvin, help me with the name, I'm stuck. Fleet, sorry, Financial Literacy and Essential Employability Skills. Bring them in, they do mock interviews, we tell them you have to dress properly for an interview. You need to speak properly when you're in the interview, we train them, we test them, and we get them ready for those. We have the clothes bank here. A lot of the people that got job interviews and did well in those interviews went across the hallway from the Career Center there, went through our clothing bank and picked out a good-looking shirt or a nice dress and had a better set of clothing to be there for their interview. I think it's, and it's in every department, it's in every class, it's in the. I think it's, and it's in every department, it's in every class, it's in the things that Marvin and the Fleet program are doing, and the Career Center does every day, they counsel those kids, if you want a job, you need to look and you need to impress the person that's across from you at the interview table. And so, we were very happy, and it's nice when, after TJ Mack was here, they called back and said, these kids are working, do you have some more? And we explained we had a fairly readily supply, that they could come back anytime. So it's a good program. Target was here also, and so it's good that those employers know they can come here. Some of them are seasonal, let's not kid ourselves, they're going to be there through the Christmas, Black Friday, or whatever they call it coming up next week, through the Christmas holiday. But if they do well, they have the opportunity to get a job that they can keep, so it's why we have the Career Center.
Well, I saw that in your report, and I thought it was worthwhile elaborating on it, especially since we are to the public, I think the public needs to know about the good work.
That's right.
Thank you, and I'll pass that to Ms. Wyatt and her staff, too, thank you.
Thank you. Good point.
Bodie, the basketball schedules, are they out?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, I want one.
Yes ma'am.
I have a question on, under Jim Beechwood's information on developing the RFQ for preliminary assessment of marketing advertising, can you just elaborate on that a little bit, what that RFQ entails?
Yes, Jim and I have been discussing, how do you go about asking a marketing company, or an advertising company, or a consulting company? What are we looking for in, as we look at, and his group of the strategic plan, he's the chair, the team leader of one of the groups on the strategic plan, they've been talking about it, we're trying to figure out what are we going to ask for? We can go out and hire a marketing company, but, you know, we want to, we have to bid that, because it's going to cost serious amount of money, but what are we looking for? What questions do we want them to answer? How do we want them to approach us? Do they want, we want them to listen to our ads, look at our print media? What do we want as we start to put together this request for companies to come in here and bid for a job to look at and revamp our marketing plan? And that's what Jim and I have been working on.
Does it include the actual development of a marketing plan that you're looking at in terms of that RFQ?
No ma'am.
Oh, it doesn't?
It's the research of what a marketing plan should look like. When we get done with that, when we figure out what we really need, then we can look at, if that company is a marketing company, if we want to stay there or we go bid that. No, it's the research of what somebody who's a marketing professional thinks we ought to be doing.
Okay.
Good question.
It's not easy to write. It's fairly easy to say, yeah, I want you to come in and take a look at our, at our marketing plan, but it's, when you sit down and try to put something together where corporations are going to come in here and bid on this, and spend the money to show us what they do and how they do it, it's strained both of us and our talents, or lack thereof.
I had one question on page twenty-eight, under Disability Services, it indicates that there's a vacancy for the director of that program, and it says this is creating a void in the leadership, I'm sure we have somebody leading that program, so who has picked that up now?
We have assigned someone that responsibility, yes, in the Academic Resource Center, and they're doing a good job, but it's not there, and.
But it's not leadershipless, I mean, there is somebody there that's.
Oh, and Dr. McDowell is always making sure that that department's taken care of, but in that specific area, and we're finding out, and Denise and I spoke about it again last week, first, we're putting together a change in that job description, do we need to fill that position, a change in that job description to justify to Dr. Givens a new position there, that will be a little bit different than the one that was there. And the other thing is, we are spending a ton of money that we didn't get no reimbursement from the state for, on disability access. And so, we are trying to come up with, and we are working on trying to get someone that, to really do an in-depth review of what we're doing. If we have two students in one program who have, who are deaf, do we need two interpreters? Do we need one? It's really becoming an issue at the Technical Education Center, where students are in a classroom, that's fine, you can have one interpreter, but when they separate and go to their shop, you have to have a second person there, and we're burning through money. Real quickly, I'm sorry, the job description on this one has already been out, Denise is reviewing it, I was thinking of financial aid, got them confused, but yes, Disability Services have been a subject of discussion in the last couple of weeks, more than I thought.
Yeah. Well, you stopped the impression that there wasn't anybody leading that program, and I was confident that wasn't true.
No, no.
Thanks Denise.
I ask for approval of my report, please.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. In page thirty-four of your, of our new books, it's a resolution asking the board to approve a resolution to levy a tax and create the capital outlay fund. Each, every five years, we must renew our capital mill levy. We did this five years ago, we have to publish this in the newspaper, it'll be published for three weeks in the official newspaper, and so I ask that either you allow me to read it, or we adopt it without it being read, but whatever way, I need this resolution, I ask for your approval, please.
Do we have to read it, Daryl?
My suggestion is that you do, yes.
Yes. Brian, please, go ahead.
Resolution to levy tax and create capital outlay fund, a resolution, whereas the Board of Trustees of Kansas City, Kansas Community College is authorized by law to, with KSA seventy-one, five-oh-one, seventy-nine, five-oh-four-oh, at sequel, to make an annual tax levy for a period of time not to exceed five years upon all taxable tangible property in the Community College District for the purpose of creating a capital outlay fund for the purpose of construction, reconstruction, repair, remodeling, additions to furnishing and equipping of the Community College buildings, architectural expenses incidental thereto, and the acquisition of real property for the use as building sites or for educational programs, and, whereas said Board of Trustees has determined to exercise the authority vested in it by said law, now therefore be it resolved that the above-named Community College shall be authorized to make an annual tax levy for a period of five years upon the assessed tangible property in the Community College District for the purpose of remodeling, additions to furnishing and equipping of the Community College buildings, architectural expenses incidental thereto, and the acquisition of real property for the use as building sites or for educational programs, adopted this nineteenth day of November, twenty thirteen, by the Board of Trustees of Kansas City, Kansas Community College, in the county of Wyandotte, state of Kansas.
Who to adopt? All right, we have a motion. Second? Have a motion, a second, to adopt the resolution. Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
At this time, I'm going to introduce Dwight Niebling, Brad Berger, and Bill Sixta from Chevron Energy, and Fred DeSanto from JE Dunn. I guess Brad's going to do the speaking. And on page thirty-one, two, three, and four of your, thirty-one, thirty-two, three, I guess we left the Dunn one out, I'm sorry. This is, they're going to go through today, the energy conservation program that about five months ago, you authorized us to pursue. They came back a couple of weeks ago, we took this to Clyde and JD in the Finance Committee the other night, they had four or five separate projects. The project presented here is a project that encompasses the items that create energy savings for the college, and give us a better total envelope for the buildings and the college on the main campus here. Someone's going to ask me where the vestibules are, they're not on here. There is a.
You knew I was going to ask that.
Well, it's, we had to look at projects that truly saved our energy, and truly had some type of a payback period on them, and they, they were, they could have been in there, but the cost for them and the cost to the college made this a significantly different period. We also looked at, could we roll into this program some construction money? And the financing company from Chevron called, we were looking at expanding the boardroom, and expanding the residential office suite area, and perhaps a grand entrance at the jewel entrance for that, but these are energy, these are our capital improvement leases that come with equipment leases on them, and when you get that heavy of a construction piece within this, then the equipment lease financing does not qualify. And so, we would not be able to qualify for the leasing on this if we put all of that extra construction into this, because it doesn't come with equipment that they can, that they can secure by the lease. And so, they called me, I guess it was early last week, and said, you can't add this to it, or the banks aren't going to pick it up. They did offer, if in fact you authorize us today to go forward and to negotiate this, and to get the real financing and get everything going on this, Chevron Energy did say, you know, they're going to have their banks wherever they are at bid this, they're going to give us this and allow us, they want us to try to bid at local bank also, and so it will go out, if we approve this, then we're going to try to get local financing on this, if it can compete with, I'm sure there are gigantic banks in California and Texas that they deal with, so we will try.
Bodie?
Ma'am?
It's one, not one of those, not that place out there where you come in, the jewel building out here, not even one of those can be fixed, where we have some double doors so the snow won't come in with you. You know what, if I was Merly, I'd quit, because I would not sit there in that cold spot all winter, that don't, that don't make sense, because this going to come in, and we could look like we could get, out of all of this, look like we could get one, which would be that one that leads into Jewel.
And right beside that, ma'am, is a great big drop-off down into those stairs, that is an engineering and architectural nightmare. Yes, in fact, we can, and we are going to look at some other ways of doing it, but not in this project, ma'am.
How soon?
I don't have an answer to that. They are, there was a different page that I should have gotten put in there, as opposed to this, it was supposed to be, I got the wrong page placed in it, so.
Okay, we ready for the presentation?
Brad, would you?
What I want to do is take about our, my name is Brad, we're original, we're working on energy solutions, I'd like to say President Givens is at work, we're allowing this work with Brian and his team to develop this project throughout the course, we've taken a lot of different turns in terms of our approach, and I think we've really come up with a program that's really, as your motto says, making life better, and our whole goal of this project is to make life better, we're not only the best people for the students here at the college, so we're really looking for a partnership, more positive impact of what we can do that will positively impact the college, no better. So, when we were talking originally, we had three things that we were really shooting for, one was enhancing education, the other one was developing a project, an energy project that would have an impact on the college, and then what can we do to partner with the community on jobs? So those are really kind of the three main focuses that we really targeted when we were pursuing this project. So when you start with, you know, enhancing education, I've met with a number of the trustees, with the administration, in terms of what do we want to do to enhance education? I've talked to some other colleagues I have at other community colleges, and they came back and said, you need to have an educational experience, you know, really expound on that educational experience, and one of the things that I got back from the administration and trustees is internships, because once a kid, or once a student can take that real-life learning in a classroom and apply it to a work environment, just like you were talking through the Fleet program, then all of a sudden a trigger might go off in terms of, what do I want to do with my career, what can I do to impact life, or moving forward in terms of my educational career and my long-term career? Well, when you look at our office and what we have here in Kansas City, it's mainly an engineering office, but we not only have engineers, we have drafting, we have accounting, we have IT, we have legal, and we have sales and marketing. And so what we're doing is developing a rotational internship program, where we can have a student come in on a semester basis and work through three or four different departments within our organization, so they can look at their class schedule and see what they can do to move through our program in terms of rotational internship program. We're still working with Dr. Kramer in terms of, what can we do in terms of helping on STEM studies and STEM education, STEM programs, but I believe by going forward first with the internship programs and getting that going first, we have a greater impact in terms of getting someone involved with our program. We also want to be able to bring our projects into the classroom and work with the folks over at the Tech Center, so that they can tie into our energy management systems, the controls, and we've had talks, if there's any equipment that we're taking off that we can salvage, that they may be able to use in the Tech Center. So we're work trying to collaborate and develop those programs on the educational portion. The other side of the project is really, is kind of the meat of it, is the energy enhancements, and what are we doing to the campus to improve it? And as Brian was saying, we went through an exhaustive list, we put them in different categories, we made them different ways, and the vestibules just fell out, just because of the impact in terms of energy savings and cost compared to the other projects. We tried to put them in, they just wouldn't fit, and then we start getting into a lot of real property versus personal property, with the vestibules not having a lot of savings toward, that starts looking more like an architectural design versus an energy efficiency measure. So through financing, it kind of helped disqualify that, even though we didn't want to, it was just part of the program, so that's the way it worked out. So when you look at what we're doing, is we're looking at roofs and windows, and when you start looking at roofs and windows in the building envelope, this entire building, jewel, is all going to get a new roof and new windows, so you're basically getting a brand-new building in terms of the building envelope. In addition to that, we're getting the energy management controls and the mechanical systems. And we talk about mechanical systems, we're talking about the HVAC, the heating and the cooling, and one of the key components of this project is converting from an all-electric system to natural gas. You have an Atmos gas line that runs within a hundred yards of the campus, and one of the things, we've been lucky so far, the ground hasn't frozen. Well, if we want to get this done, what's, the reason why I bring that up is because if the ground freezes, we can't put in our pipeline, a hundred, was it about a hundred yards, Brad? About a hundred yards worth of gas pipe. And the key issue there is, all the new systems we're putting in are both going to be electric and gas, and so we can't start replacing and doing the HVAC work until we get the gas line in. So there's a, that's a key component of this program in terms of getting conversion off of a hundred percent all-electric to natural gas as a second heat source. And then the other issue is lighting, you guys have done a very good job in terms of the staff adds, in terms of self-performing, a lot of the lighting systems, so that's a portion of the project, but it's not a real large portion, because a lot of it's already been done through existing operating funds. So then you start looking at, well, how do we affect the community? Well, as you can see on the pro forma that should be in your books, this is a fairly significant project for energy efficiency, and one of the things we want to do is make sure these projects and jobs and opportunities stay local to Wyandotte County and Kansas City, and we are committed to utilizing the existing contractors, the existing personnel that you've used in the past to build and develop this project. I've listed four of them here, Design Mechanical, Delta Roofing, W. Carter and Associates, and CNC Group, we're all involved in developing the pricing and the overall structure of this project. So we've been working with them already, and we continue to work with them in the past, and then what we're going to ask is, as these main contractors start working with tier-two contractors, we're really going to focus on some of the smaller minority businesses that they could help and leverage to do additional work for them. So we're committed to making that work. So then, really, with that being said, as Mr. Bodie had mentioned, the second thing is really how does these projects get financed? It's a really simple, tax-exempt municipal lease financing process, and once you start adding in the buildings, it gets more of a mortgage look to it versus tax-exempt leasing. And so, we work with a number of national lenders, Bank of America, Wells Fargo, some independent lessors like Cannon and Armstrong, but what we want to do is really focus on other local lenders. So when I was at the chamber meeting the other night, I talked with the folks from Liberty Bank, with Brotherhood Bank, and they were interested in talking to us about financing this project, so I'm excited about that. So I'm excited about that. So with that being said, are there any questions in regards to the scope that should be a matrix in your board packet about the projects and then also the overall cost of the project?
Oh, I got a couple. You said CNC?
CNC Group.
Who is it?
They are a, they've been working here in the college for a number of years, and they are a control manufacturer, a control installer. So the energy management system is what they manage.
Okay, and who was the other one?
The other groups we've got, I shouldn't know, Design Mechanical-
Okay.
Delta Roofing, and then W. Carter and Associates. There's one more. KC Mechanical.
Okay, Delta Roofing, okay. I got another one. Our science building is in this bad a shape, you got dots all over it.
It's been a lot of work done to it. I don't know the exact, I mean, if you look at it, those are all the different components that are being done. I'd have to look at the-
I know.
Exactly.
It's got the most. Okay.
Brad, on your matrix, I understand where there's a dot, that's where you're going to do something.
Correct.
Where there's not a dot, does that mean we don't need it or we're already doing it? Or maybe both?
Some of both.
Depending on specific item that was-
Okay.
You know, occupancy centers and stuff, we have many of those already in place that take care of people when they walk in, you know, and so these are added.
Anything that's not on here that was left out besides the vestibules that we left out because of cost?
Well, I think that's pretty-
Items that we've investigated.
Okay, okay.
And you saying, Brad, that that was just because of the cost?
For the vestibules?
Uh-huh.
Well, it's cost and financing.
Yeah.
And so it's really two components. When you start looking at the cost of all the vestibules and then the financing, when you start mixing real property and personal property in a lease, the lessors look at it differently. Because if you think about a lease, it's like leasing a car. The tax-exempt lease that we would be using for this program would just be like you lease a car. So if for some reason the payments aren't made, they have collateral on that equipment. Well, if it's a vestibule, they don't have collateral on that vestibule. So that becomes real property where it's more of a mortgage. It looks more like a mortgage-type setup. It's just the different way they finance real property versus personal property.
Now you're going to teach me.
I'll get John Burgwell because he's going to have to teach me because that's about all I know.
Brian, page 32.
Yeah.
The financial aspects of the performance-based energy program.
If I can walk you through that, please.
That'd be great because I think there are a handful of trustees that got lost on that walk.
First column. Column two are energy savings. By putting these, by putting these projects in, this equipment in, this is the estimated, in fact, this is the guaranteed line that we will, we will save on our current energy bill.
Consumption, right.
Operational maintenance savings, well, those are an estimate if we put new machines in and they have a 15- or a 20-year life and we're replacing one that's already been here for 12 or 18 years. Those are the expenses that we will save by not having to maintain those pieces of equipment that are already there. We won't be patching the roof. We'll be putting in new roofs on. Column four is the really critical one for the board to look at. Column four is the annual customer contribution. We can't pay for this entire project with energy savings. And so this is a commitment of $291,000, $300,000 a year. The college has to commit to this project that we will take the energy savings for the next 15 years. We will take the operational and maintenance savings for the next 15 years, and we will put in for the next 15 years about $300,000. And when we do all of that, then we will get this project done and we will, after 15, obviously, we hope aren't paying, we won't be paying anymore and the energy savings continue. But we have to make a commitment of, the money we save this year in energy goes into this project to pay for it, plus that contribution. And those are the, those are the way we pay for this project over the next 15 years. And we make about $10.9 million to the leaser and we make about $11 million, there's about $100,000 truly of difference. But we're going to get $11 million worth of this project here. This is an example set at three and a half or 3.75% interest rate. We still think that's a good.
Brian, can any of that money be paid out of capital outlay?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And one of the things that we spoke about is we will identify in, just like we did the lease payments to the state of Kansas-
Right.
-that we're continuing to pay, the eight years that we, that we got the money to do the first set of roofs and the second set of roofs, we will identify that in the capital budget and set that each year we will pay, we will have that payment that we know we have to add to. The difficult one will be the management within the general fund budget. Yeah, did we save $500,000 this year from BPU? Well, that's what we have to set up inside to make sure we understood that we saved this amount of money. And even though in the past we wrote the check to one company, we're still going to have to pull that out and make that payment to another company. And so there's not going to be some big cash flow wonderland here for 15 years. After that, I would hope it's really a savings for the entire, for the college every year out. And obviously, it is an, an energy savings program like this, you have to pay for it for a while, but after that, it becomes a program that saves forever. We'll at least have a 20-year roof. For five years, we shouldn't have anything. The amount of money saved by the roof should be five years. Boilers last 30, 40 years if they get proper maintenance. So for 30 or 40 years, those boilers should run at this college with proper maintenance. And you've, it took you 15 to pay for them, but they should give you 25 years after that. And I guess even though, we do the economy and we do the environment some good.
Okay. Did that enter anybody?
That's five and six, seven is their measurement program, total program cost of 11 million and over 15 years, those are the net savings. The critical two columns is, column two and column four, we have to make a commitment. And, well, I guess the real one is column six, we got to make a commitment that we're going to make those $600,000 to $800,000 payments for the next 15 years. I mean, that is what the company who, whoever finances this project is going to want us to do.
Do the savings reflect when you have everything done or will it start, the savings start or you start phasing things in? Is that-
We will start accounting for savings during the construction period, but these numbers are for when it's all in.
When it's all done, okay.
And how long is that going to take?
Right now, six months, possibly. We have windows designed once we start construction.
Ma'am, a lot of this has to be done at night, you know, and we're going to have scheduling issues with classrooms. This is not going to be, I mean, when we're going through every office and every classroom in this building and we're taking all the windows out of-
Right.
-out of this building, it'll be, we'll have to schedule this board meeting on the proper day when there's windows back in there.
And I'd like to reiterate, one of the key factors is the ground freezing because we can't start any of the HVAC work if the ground freezes. We've been fortunate, we've had a late spring.
Yes.
But if it gets cold and the ground freezes, then that really backs up, you know, the construction.
Brian, I know you probably don't have this, but any idea at all how much ratio between general fund and capital outlay might be on our payment?
Today, well, no, I would try to keep it exactly like that. I would like to commit $300,000 from the capital fund.
From the whole thing from capital?
The 300. And then the savings from the general fund that we save in the general fund, use those also, and so we can track them that way.
Good.
Did you say 3.75 interest?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's the estimate. This number could change and you will obviously see the true number, but Dr. Givens and I need some, you know, some guidance and some authority so we can go out and they can go and we can try to go out and get this thing financed.
So Brian, you went all the way up to column nine and didn't explain that. And am I to assume or should we assume that the real savings doesn't start until after year 15?
The real cash savings, correct, yes, sir. Column nine, if you look at the difference between 11,689, come on, machine, don't do this.
689, yeah, that's it. We got it.
That's the difference between that and the $10,896,000 that we're going to pay. I mean, it is a net saving.
That's really a bad, I mean, we should rename that a different name because it's really just kind of, I mean, it's pennies when you look at the size of the project.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I think that's why, I think that's why a couple of us struggled with it because it didn't truly seem like net savings to us.
Right. The energy savings are in column two. We hope in 15 years to save 6.5 or 6.2 million dollars in energy bills.
That's after the gas get in here?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
If the BPU raises the rate, we still won't have that. Don't be looking at me like that. I said if BPU raises their rate, you still won't have that. That's what I said.
And these have been, these figures have all been adjusted for 4% inflation. So we've looked at that. It's pretty tough to predict what the rate for electrical will be 15 years from now or the rate for natural gas.
It's predictable, whatever you need next month.
Okay, good. Excellent questions and great responses, everyone. Any other questions?
Brad, are you going to talk about the internship program?
No, you want to talk about J.D. Dunn's intern program? Okay.
As Brad said, there's an internship program that's part of this, this whole overall project. What J.D. Dunn is committed to do is provide two internships through our regular internship program through our HR department, which we're really going through right now, trying to determine who and how and where that fits in. Right now, our plan is to look at one intern from the construction group, the construction classes here, and let him work with the field management side. And then another person from the business school side here and then work with our business management side. So we're wanting to provide two internships, probably not quite sure exact on all the details of how it's going to work, but two paid internships for two people here. And we'll let the department's heads here or your group decide who gets those internships or who comes to us for interviews so we can interview those people and work together on how to provide those internships.
And we were happy to see that they had asked for someone either from business, they also looked at the potential, we may look at someone from our drafting department. They have that. I spoke to Matt today. It's important that we just, it's not just the construction management side of the class. Dunn's obviously a massive business. And we have good business students in this, in here. And so we need to reach out to those, not just the construction side. So we were very happy that they, that they offered in the business side of the house and perhaps the drafting also.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So I would ask if the board could authorize Dr. Givens and I to proceed with this project and for us to have the ability to seek financing and to bring it to your December meeting for the final, final approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there additional questions or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you all very much.
Appreciate it.
Yes, we're looking forward to the benefits here. Okay, item number 10 on the agenda, finance.
I ask for your approval on item 10A of the payment of the bills.
Trustee Townsend, you care to chime in from the finance committee's perspective? J.D. usually carries this bucket on payment of the bills. Did your committee have a chance to review?
We did, we did, we did go over it and everything and then, is it in order, Mr. Chairman?
All right. Thank you.
I would like to move.
You move for approval?
Yes, sir.
All right, I have a motion. Does anybody else want to pay the bills?
No.
All right, we have a second. Thank you very much. Are there questions about paying the bills?
We're still trying to find them.
We're scrolling. We're just scrolling.
We're trying to find all these bills.
All right, I'll give you a minute, okay?
They start on page 30, they start on page 36 and they run into the page hundreds.
Look at all 80 pages.
Yes.
Right down.
Scrolling should have been prior to the meeting.
One of the things Peggy and I talked about is how are we going to try to figure out how to shorten this? And so we're going to be working with the finance committee to see if there's any way to shorten this so that you don't have to try to scroll 80 pages, but currently you have to.
All right. We're going to call the question.
I actually found it easier than flipping all those pages.
All in favor of the motion to pay the bills?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. We'll pay the bills. Thank you.
I ask for your approval under 10B on the financial reports. They're reviewed by the committee also.
Trustee Townsend, motions to approve?
Second.
I think that was a second from Dr. Daniels.
I think it was.
Any question or comment? Financial report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And under 10C, 1 through 7, I ask for your approval of these recommendations.
I'll move.
I'll second, but I got a question.
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Now, questions or comments?
Question on number seven.
Number seven. That's page five.
The, we had another power surge and we're trying to figure out why that happened, but with our deductible being a $25,000 deductible for that type of stuff and the bills, the estimate is $17,800 to replace them, we have to pay that.
What's the prohibition on reducing the-
I can't hear you, sir.
What's the, why won't we reduce the deductible since, since this happens? This happens more.
Well, we can, we can look at that. The farther we reduce the deductible on property, the higher that bill goes. It's been 25,000, I think, since I came here. And we can look at that, sir, but let us take a look and see what would happen if we did in fact reduce that. The big challenge there is that something big happens to the school.
Brian, do you know if we have the metering surge protectors in the meters of the buildings that BPU offers? Do you know if we have those?
I do not know if we have. I will check, though. It is not our buildings and so we are still negotiating with, these are all in housing and we're the tenant and we're still trying to negotiate. However, this equipment added to that building is our equipment at our request and at our work, but the building is theirs. And so we're a tenant and this is tenant added. So maybe we need renters insurance with the lower deductible, but that's why we're on the hook for these. I will check, though, a metering system on, from BPU on.
A surge protect, right, that goes right at the meter.
Right at the meter.
Right at the meter. I know I have one in my home and I knock on wood, up to this point, I've never had an issue with an electronic on any surge issue that BPU's had. Do you have a rate?
Right, yeah, really good.
Yeah, it's a pennies a month really for, you know, for it. And, yeah, compared to this, it's significant. Yes.
I, oh, I have, I have another question. Yes, on number six, on the development of the new website.
Yes.
On number six, on the development of the new website, is there going to be any input from different advisories, et cetera, on the look and design of the website?
I think someone who could answer that better than me is sitting two people away from you.
That's, that's...
We are planning on having several, I don't want to call them committee, they're going to be focus groups to get feedback and input from several different constituents like students, faculty, staff.
Hey, Bass, could you speak up a little bit, please?
Administrators and also the advancement council.
Yeah, I've got a couple from the advancement council that are very interested in helping with that.
They're going to be having some focus groups to get, solicit that kind of feedback before they go into development.
Thank you.
They are not committees, just focus groups.
Right, yeah, wonderful, thank you.
Okay, we're ready to call the question. All in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Trustee Maddox, second of the motion. Okay. We're ready for item number eleven miscellaneous. Before we move to that though, I would just like to mention that you've probably noticed that this is the first meeting that we've conducted with the, you know, with the new iPads and we don't have all of these notebooks up here, so that's, hence the comments about scrolling and, you know, searching and trying to find it. We're all still becoming familiar with it and everything, but I must say the experience has been great up to this point for this meeting.
I would agree with that, Don. I want to thank Peggy and Bass for all the work they did. I think this is a wonderful program. It's really good.
I agree. I'm loving this. I really, I'm surprised.
And Mary Ann, that basketball schedule you can get on that iPad. We'll show you that, all right?
So she got, we've got a little tutoring going on.
I'd like to double thank Peggy because Peggy made it, Peggy really learned how to put that together.
Did a great job with it.
It's really, it's really been phenomenal.
We've been enjoying the training and, you know, the whole thing and a couple of us had iPads and the rest didn't and so it's pretty new for most everybody. And we're trying to model the way of innovation and technology development, you know, in the college, so the board's on board with that. Yes, sir.
Okay, item eleven, need a motion to enter into executive session to discuss non-elected personnel matters to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed for a period of...
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes.
So move.
All right. Dr. Daniels motioned and trustee Maddox second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we will temporarily adjourn and we'll be back. All right, we're back in open session here. Trustee Flunder will rejoin us momentarily. Item number twelve on the agenda, personnel.
I'm going to cover for Dean Marks this evening.
Okay.
Under personnel, item twelve A, for your information, I ask your approval.
So move.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second for approve the section A on information. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries.
And I would ask for your approval of the recommendations under twelve B to include the item that was added in the amendment to the agenda.
So move. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any question or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. All right. Agenda item thirteen, report of committees. Anyone like to lead off?
There's also a human resources division report that she makes on page one-nineteen and I'd, I'll make a motion to accept that report. That came from Leona, the dean, human resources report.
Okay, we have a recommendation to accept the human resources report. It's on page one-nineteen, if you care to look at it. Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Ray. Now we'll move to item thirteen, report of committees. Any, anyone care to lead off?
I just have a very brief one. We did change the date of presentation for the advancement council. It will be December second and we will be conducting and presenting our strategic plan presentation that we did at the national conference.
Excellent, okay, good. Very good. All right. Any other committee reports?
I don't know, I meant that the gala committee met again and is moving right along, established a timeline for the gala that will be October twenty-fifth of...
Twenty-fourteen.
Twenty-fourteen. And one of the key things that we need to do immediately, and I will just throw that out there, is come up with a theme which we hope will be the annual theme. So some catchy phrase, something that, you know, definitely indicates education and raising money for, for our college and for scholarships. If anybody has any real neat ideas, we're in the process of taking those in. So all you creative folks, let us know.
Seven eleven.
Seven.
Seven eleven.
Very good. Right. The KACC quarterly meeting is coming up here in a couple of weeks, December eighth and ninth in Coffeyville. Dr. Givens, trustee Flunder and I will be sojourning down there for that. And I'm sure I'm the designated driver.
Yes.
You don't want his feet.
Thanks, Kim, Brian, for that nice viewing too, by the way. That's the only way to go.
We on unfinished business?
We are on report of committees. So I think we have concluded that however, so not hearing anybody else speak up. All right, let's move to item fourteen, unfinished business.
Have we scheduled the next meeting on the handbook?
Uh, no, Peggy's been real busy with me out of town, but she'll jump on that tomorrow.
I'm in no hurry. I just...
I know. You're right, we need to reschedule it. We'll start working on that.
Yes, sir. I don't think, the handbook may have to be extended on kind of holiday season coming up and nobody's, I don't know, the time, the time schedules can be all messed up.
Well, we'll see what Peggy can, can possibly get coordinated, but maybe we'll try to wrap it up in one more meeting somehow if we can expedite how we move, how we move through that. So I think there's some strategies being talked about for that and...
Might be to go to casino and do that, get that done at the casino.
I don't think so, trustee Townsend.
Could you make an electronic version of the handbook available to us?
Yeah, we can.
Yes. We will do that today.
The handbook or the policy book?
We already have the changes that we talked about at that meeting.
Hundred twenty-five.
Matter of fact, I separated them out for the rest of the book so I can go through it.
Well, there was hundred twenty on the rest of the camera today.
We have one meeting going here, please.
I'll talk out loud. For the handbook, when we met before and the deans were included in our meeting, the changes that we made, I've gotten all those back and separated the parts we discussed out. And so now we need to take them back to the college committees for the college committees to see them and then we'll be ready to bring them to the board because the board has already given us them.
That might be a good place for it, yeah.
Yeah, so it may, I don't know if we have any more college meetings between now and January, but if we do, we'll, we'll work on getting it out again.
Yeah, that's race committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.